Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place the speed limit sign here. No parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow, green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T? EverGee, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
You're invited to discover summer fun. Ride the waves in the wave pool. Jump off the diving boards. Take a dip in the Action River. And slide down the slides at our outdoor water park, Summit Waves. After a day in the sun, experience downtown Lee Summit. Enjoy gourmet pizza and delicious food for lunch. Then cool down with handcrafted ice cream right around the corner. Summer at the Summit, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crises, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene. Licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring. So they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me, I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say 982, then route.
Officers in route, 914.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as the co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need. And also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health. And I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations and she really felt that she had nobody. And getting to know her story and getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person and they responded immediately. And we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Lee Summit has you covered for all of your summer fun. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Summer at the Summit, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I love where you guys are coming from, you're local and you're all kind of coming together. But where I'm struggling with from the last time that we talked about this, I think it was maybe October.
I actually grew up in my district. We moved here my sophomore year in high school. My parents still live in the same house and I just went through high school here and then have stayed in Lee Summit ever since. The neighborhood that my parents live in is Canterbury. My favorite thing, and I still do to this day, is I love to go running. They have the best sidewalks. I feel like you can go for days. So now I still get to do that since I live not too far from them. I get to use those same routes that I took during high school and it's just fun. We're a big soccer family. I love sports, I love to watch sports and it's even more fun to watch sports when my kids are in it. I coached my middle daughter Josie's team I have since kindergarten. We do the basketball, we do softball, we're going to do volleyball. It's just so much fun.
Hi, Faith Hodges.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Something that I would like to accomplish while on city council is to get more family activities here. You know, I don't want to have to be driving my family to, say, the Kansas side or any other city but my own. And I want to be able to invest in our city and make family memories in our city.
Open the public hearing on the matter of K1 speed, diventures.
Crack shack. Blue jeans golf.
I just want to say thank you for bringing this to Lee Summit. I grew up at this, my parents all take us there, so I'm excited now to take my kids there.
Bill number 23, pre-construction services for the downtown Market Plaza project.
I am just as excited as everybody else about the downtown marketplace. I'm extremely excited about the community that it's going to bring, bringing more family things to do to the city and right in the heart of it.
When you presented the numbers, the first time you came to us, it was 25.5% and then a lot of...
You know, people were like, oh, you know, being on council, it's not a lot of work, not a lot of... I think it was a bit of a surprise when there's so much info that you realize you just don't know. Even something as simple as sidewalks. It's like you don't realize how much goes into something like that. After a couple of months, I'm like, okay, finally catching the groove of how things work, learning new things, but also feel like I've got some things under my belt as well. It's been a great experience so far.
Like to call to order the Lee Summit Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 10th, 2023. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mark Hitchens.
Present.
Cinderaider.
Present.
Jake Lovelace. Dana Arth.
Present.
Donny Funk.
Present.
Terry Trafton.
Present.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Present.
Chip Tuzinski.
Present.
Thank you. I know no changes to the agenda, so I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as published.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, can I get a vote, please?
Mark Hitchens.
Yes, sorry.
Cinderaider.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donny Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
And the agenda has been approved. We will move on to our section for public comments. Do we have any comments pertaining to the business of the Planning Commission outside of any of the applications tonight? Sorry, we don't have anybody on Zoom for the public comments. Nope. Thank you. We will move on to our next item of business and that is the approval of the consent agenda. And we have one item, item A, approval of the July 27th, 2023 Planning Commission action letter. Motion on this, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, can I get a vote, please?
Mark Hitchens.
Yes.
Cinderaider.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donny Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved. We will move on to our public hearings and we will open up application PL 2022-441, Preliminary Development Plan, Lakewood Pool Parking Expansion, 4140 Northeast Dick Hauser Drive. Lakewood Property Owners Association, applicant. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. Applicant have a presentation for us. Make your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Reed. My Lee Summit address is 6008C Northeast Kensington Court. And the application is coming from the Lakewood property owners at 651 Northeast St. Andrews Circle, Lee Summit. Okay, so the narrative on this is that we agreed with the city that the on-street parking lent itself to some unsafe characteristics. So the city took away the on-street parking that we've had for many years, which with the new facility made us under... Parking was too small. So we need to expand the parking lot. There was a play park there. We didn't like the fact that it was near the intersection, so we moved it over to the other side of the facility.
Mr. Reed, sorry, I'm going to pause you for a second. Getting some feedback from in there, it's like buzzing through here. Thank you, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, okay. So we moved the play park, which facilitated the area for the parking lot expansion. And so we come here respectfully requesting the expansion to yield us another 32 vehicles, which is very important to us in terms of member satisfaction of being able to park at that facility during the summer. That's kind of the overview, anything specific that you'd like to hear on this project?
No worries, we'll go to staff for their presentation. Looks like Mr. McGuire is going to give us a overview here.
I apologize for running a little behind and having my presentation preloaded. I do need to swear in still. All right, good evening Commissioners, Shannon McGuire, Senior Planner. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 17.
Exhibits 1 through 17 noted and entered into the record.
I apologize. Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 12.
Exhibits 1 through 12 noted and entered into the record.
All right, before you, a preliminary development plan, seeking approval for an expansion of an existing parking lot. As the applicant stated, with the reconstruction of the pool and the removal of on-street parking, it has necessitated additional onsite parking. They are requesting to go from 12 existing parking stalls, add 31 new to get to a total of 43. The current property is Zoned R1, much of the surrounding property is Zoned R1, with the exception of this portion here to the west, which is Zoned RP4. It's got some four plexes on it, all residential surrounding all the way around. The Ignite Comprehensive Land Use Map does identify the area as an open space or park use. Existing use is compatible and consistent with that. And parking lots are commonly common accessory uses that accompany that type of use, so. Again, the property is Zoned R1, as you can see here. They are expanding to the north with those new spaces. Overall property size is about seven, a little over seven acres. They are requesting one modification and that's why we're here before you with a PDP. Typically, parking lot expansions can be handled at the administrative level with a simple FTP. However, the existing parking lot has a non-conforming setback along Northeast Dick Hauser Road or Dick Hauser Drive, and they're wishing to meet that, so staff doesn't have the ability to administratively approve that. So we have to come before you and the city council to seek that modification. The UDO does typically require a 20-foot setback from any right-of-way for parking lots. The applicant is proposing to reduce that to the 10-foot, again, matching the existing parking lot out there. To mitigate any kind of additional negative impacts that that reduced setback may cause, the applicant has increased the amount of vegetation, bushes and trees along that area to help soften that look. And also they're proposing a small burn as well. So with those conditions or those added vegetation and the existing parking lot staff feels that the request is reasonable and we do support that modification. So as with most applications, we do have two conditions of approval as listed here and in the staff letter. So with that, the application does meet the UDO and the design and construction manual. And I can answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Shan. We have any questions or comments from the public on this application? I will move to the commission for any questions. Commissioner Tuzinski, you have any questions for staff or the applicant?
Just real quick, Shan, is it coming in with a new parking lot and having the existing parking lot there? I mean, is it traditionally, is this something to not request the additional setback? I mean, considering half the, the new parking lot is almost half of what's existing. And then there's really only seven spots potentially that could be removed to get the 20-foot setback. And the new one could be the new parking lot, plus they could expand maybe a little bit further. I don't know, maybe there's not other way, but to get that 20-foot setback. Given that the purpose of the PDP or the parking lot expansion is to provide more parking, they're trying to fit as much parking in there. So we would lose the entire row of parking to meet that parking there. And it wouldn't gain, you know, that much. We already got that existing condition there, so this is an ask that has been asked in the past of other existing parking lots. Most recently comes to mind as the library. We did that out there, kind of there adjacent to the tire shop in that area. And as well as a few other places, so. So what you're saying, there's a precedence of allowing this to... Yes. All right, perfect, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioner Benbrook, any questions?
Yes, one, thank you, Chair. Just kind of curious, what's the occupancy of the pool area? The allowable occupancy, I'm wondering if we're overparked for the occupancy. That's where I'm leading with my questions.
I am not sure, I didn't calculate the pool occupancy on this one.
Okay, so we haven't double-checked the occupancy versus parking?
No, you have multiple other facilities out there as well. In addition to the pool, you have the playground, you have the basketball court and tennis ball courts. So typically the occupancy or the parking lot is set based on how many residences are in the overall neighborhood. This is a very large neighborhood, they have three pools, so it's they're not tied to just the occupancy of the specific pool, this specific pool with the overall neighborhood as well.
So the reason for the addition onto the parking lot is they're currently street parking and it's causing some dangerous situations, is that correct?
I believe that there was street parking, but it has been removed and it's now signed as no parking.
Okay, signed as no parking, so moving it inbound or onto the property, the parking will allow us to no longer park on the street, creating a safer condition, that's what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Thank you, that's all I had, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Jana Ford.
Yeah, I just have two questions and it's more of a clarification of what's in the packet here. Can we describe a little bit more about the pervious pavement that's proposed and why it's only a selected portion of the new addition?
I'll refer that to our engineer.
Yes, the pervious pavement is used for water quality. Oh, closer, okay. Sorry. The pervious pavement is to help with the water quality requirements that the additional parking lot impervious pavement is creating. So that is a way to mitigate the stormwater impact. To get the water quality without having to do additional measures like a water quality basin, which they didn't really have room for. And so we still get the benefit without having to take away additional land for something like that.
Okay, now I guess my question, next question to that is, is there a reason why it's only the parking portion and not the little, I don't know what you want to call it, on the north side? I guess it'd be the west side.
I believe that the requirement, it's dictated by how much volume they needed. So they only put in as much to meet the requirements that the city has.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question, the landscape plan. I guess there's some trees that are pointed out to be remaining and some to be removed in addition to new foliage. Is there, I guess, is there a better way to describe which trees are in fact remaining versus being removed?
Referring to trees along this area?
Yeah, so just you see the Northeast Dick Hauser Drive label for the street name directly underneath it had mentioned 24-inch tree remain and then right below that note it says tree to be removed. I guess is it literally just that one tree that's being removed? I just want clarification on...
Currently existing, there's three or four locust trees that are not in very good condition. Matter of fact, they're missing quite a few of the top branches and we've elected to remove those and then replant... Matter of fact, they're missing quite a few of the top branches, and we've elected to remove those and then replant a more. I can't see, it's another type of locust, but it's a more adaptable to this climate. So the sunburst locust is what we're, and so we're taking out the old diseased locust.
Okay, so it's just the locust trees that are severely damaged that are being replaced?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Trufton.
Commissioner Art. I have two questions. First of all, this is for legal. There's three of us who are residents of Lakewood. Do we need to abstain from voting?
No, I think you're okay to vote unless, unless there's a concern that you, you have a direct financial interest in the application, which probably is not the case.
Unless our dues are going to go up for it. Okay, okay, but I do have a question. I've forgotten it. Okay.
Calm down.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Raider.
I have no questions. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Kitchens?
No questions from me. Thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Art, if you want to try again. Okay. Anything else from the commission? We'll close the public hearing and open up for discussions or a motion on this. Commissioner Kitchens, any discussion on your end?
Like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I move that we recommend.
Hold on one second. Do we have any discussion from any of the commissioners? Sorry.
No, you're good.
Go, go ahead. Fire away.
All right. I'd like to move that we recommend approval of application PL 2022-441 Preliminary Development Plan, Lakewood Pool Park Parking Expansion, 4140 Northeast Dick Hauser Drive, Lakewood Property Owners Association applicant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Could I get a vote on this application, please?
Mark Kitchens?
Yes.
Sandra Raider?
Yes.
Dana Art?
Yes.
Donnie Funk?
Yes.
Terry Trufton?
Yes.
Tonya Johnna Ford?
Yes.
Mandy Benbrook?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
And the application has been recommended for approval. Thank you. We will move on to our next item, Item B, and we will open up application PL 2023-093 Rezoning from CP2 to RP3 to PMIX and Preliminary Development Plan, Prior Mixed Use, 1805 and 1905 Southwest M150 Highway, Griffin Riley Property Group applicant. Anyone going to speak or provide testimony on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time.
I'm going to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Thank you. The applicant has a presentation. Come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name is Matt Tap, representing Griffin Riley Property Group, 21 Southeast 29th Terrace, Lee Summit, Missouri 64082. Technical difficulty. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm a little away from the microphone, I'm sorry. Again, my name is Matt Tap. I'm with Griffin Riley Property Group. And first and foremost, want to thank you all for your time this evening. I think post 5 o'clock PM, it's evening. As I know how precious everyone's time is. As a matter of fact, earlier today, I dropped off my older daughter at University of Arkansas in Fayetteville. So if landscape buffers and stormwater get me weepy, I think you'll understand why. So that was, that was more, that was harder than I thought it was going to be. But I'm here, I'm here. Okay, is it, does this forward the slides? Okay. So I'm sure most of you all are familiar with Griffin Riley Property Group as we've done a fair amount of projects in Lee Summit. So I'll be super brief on the introduction, and then we'll talk about the site, the development plan, our neighbor meeting that we held, and then a project fly-through video at the end, and then Q and A, of course. So a quick introduction, Griffin Riley Property Group, or GRPG for short, we're a full-service commercial real estate development management company. We specialize in delivering best-in-class across multiple product types, mainly multifamily, single-family, retail office, little bit of industrial, little bit of self-storage. You can see our vision and mission and our values. I won't go into a whole lot of detail, but just the bottom line here is we believe in integrity and transparency with the number one goal of treating you like family, because that's how it should be. We have over 900,000 square feet either under our house or formerly under our house or currently going through the process in commercial real estate, so we have the expertise, we have the financial capabilities to see this project through. We leave, we believe steadfastly in community engagement. That is why we held a neighbor meeting and listened to the neighbors. We've had many conversations with the neighbors, and we feel like we've arrived at a number of resolutions that is, is productive for all sides. A little bit of history, Fred Delibero began Griffin Riley Property Group in 2016 when he sold Summit Homes. Since then, we've been producing commercial real estate in and around the Kansas City metropolitan area. I wanted to show a few examples. You probably familiar with this project. This is our Blackwell Mixed Use Project, recently approved by this body in the city, and is currently going through site development work at this point. We have in red, the retail center, and then the luxury apartments in the brown color, we'll say bronze color. We have a reunion product, which is the orange-yellow color towards the bottom right-hand side of the site, and then our BTR Single Family For Rent in the green in the upper right. And also, this might be familiar to some of you, the O'Tree Commons. It was completed in 2017, fully leased, 50 Highway in Lee Summit. And then kind of what started it all is the residences at Echelon in the same very 150 Highway corridor where we're proposing a project tonight. Here's our A-plus project team. They're behind me right now, but we have Schlegel Civil Engineers, Roseman Associates on the architectural side, and then Amy McCurdy, McCurdy Engineers on the traffic side, which we'll cover later on. So the site specifically is around 20.92 acres on the southeast corner of 150 Highway and Prior Road. There's a regional snapshot there in the bottom left. What we are proposing, actually, I'll talk about the current zoning. The current zoning as it stands right now, the northern portion is CP2, planned community commercial, and the southern portion is RP3, a multifamily, a little bit medium heavier density factor. A project named Bellicera was approved back in 2007 on 34 acres, so it took a little more property to the east. There was a PDP, had over 750,000 square feet of commercial, 400,000 square feet of residential. Here, I wanted to quickly overlay our proposed site plan to get a real feel and to hammer home here that we are proposing the same uses, just more stacking them together to create that live-work-play environment that the city of Lee Summit and many municipalities across Kansas City are really striving for, and we really feel the 150 Highway Corridor is asking for this. So to give you kind of a visualization, because I'm more of a graphical learner, to show you some comparable projects to give you an idea of inspiration. And so the Streets of West Prior, phenomenal project. Drake did a fantastic job there, and it continues to do a fantastic job. And here's our site plan, again, live-work-play, want to stress that. It's about 20.92 acres up along 150 Highway Corridor, which is up on the left side, so north is facing to the left. We have a couple of retail pads covering 0.87 acres and 1.18 acres. And then building number four is our mixed-use building, where we have ground floor, commercial, 21,000 square feet, with two stories of luxury apartments above that, 66 units. And then going left to right, we have our Central Park, our open space area. And then we have buildings two and three that are very similar. Those are 55 units. And then building number one is towards the south end or to the right, that abuts the existing Napa Valley neighborhood, and that is three stories, 77 units. I call it an L-shaped building with the pool, outdoor amenity area behind. Very commonplace for our type of a project overlooking our water feature, our stormwater feature ponds, with a recreational trail around it, and then a dog park on the lower right-hand side with detached garages on the outside perimeter. So again, for me, a picture tells a thousand words, and a 3D render really speaks volumes. So this is that mixed-use building up on the corner. If you see in the bottom portion of my slide, you kind of get a feel for the view angle of where this shot, these shots are showing. This is along 150 Highway on that mixed-use building, ground floor, commercial, with two floors of apartments above, really activating that ground floor space, having restaurants and those type of users that align with luxury apartments below. This is building number four, sorry, building number one. Building number four is up on the corner. Building number one is on the south side, and this is the front on the left-hand side. That is our main entry, where the leasing office will be, where amenities will be on each floor for each floor of residences. And then the right-hand side picture is the backside or the courtyard side with the pool and an outdoor area, and perhaps playground with the pond and a recreational trail. We did host a neighbor meeting on June 8th at Alder's Gate, United Methodist Church on the 150 Highway Corridor, where a number of topics were raised and discussed. I wanted to highlight those and talk a little bit about how we've addressed those between then and now. The first part is trash enclosures and garages, and the neighbors had some concern as to the location, particularly on the south trash enclosure, because originally it was up kind of more closer Prior Road. So we were able to relocate that with our civil engineer, more on the right-hand side, if you see in the yellow. And there was other concerns about the detached garages and impacting the neighbors. And we orient those facing away from the property and also really beef up the landscape buffer, landscaping, as well as fencing in the stormwater, to really give that offset from the property to the south. And then speaking of stormwater, we are preserving that drainage swale coming from the Osage Project, which is to the west. And that swale is existing in place. It will continue to stay place. We are protecting the stream. We have that stream setback requirement ordinance, and then we have our stormwater feature in the bottom. And traffic was also discussed, and we have obviously completed a full traffic impact study where it recommended improvements, and every one of those we are adhering to. And I'll just go through them really quick. There's a new, will be a new DXL right turn lane going into the site from 150 Highway, coming from the north side there, so that's the orange color up in the upper portion. And then we're working currently with MoDOT on traffic signal utilization and improving timing on that traffic signal, because we heard time and time again that that signal has some issues with timing. So we'll work with MoDOT on that right now. And then we were extending the northbound Prior Road, right turn lane onto 150, as well as improving the left turn lane into our developments going southbound on Prior. All these are highlighted by orange, along with our new southwest Osage Drive planned going through the middle, which will then continue as development occurs going east. And then we're improving Prior Road, curb and gutter, and adhering to city requirements, going the full length of our development on Prior. Trees and screening were obviously discussed, and we always want to be good neighbors, so like I mentioned before, highlighted in green, we are preserving that stream setback. We're staying well far away from that, as well as having major landscape buffer on that south side, as well as the east side. And working with the east property owner, we have arrived at a solution with a fence and landscape buffer on the east side, so as to lessen any impact for them on the east side. And then folks had questions about the commercial uses, and we have hired a commercial broker, and they're already out there attracting retailers and restaurants, and we've had some traction, and we're hoping to, to ink in some folks pretty soon before we know it. So we're really, really excited for this project. Okay, fingers crossed that technology works this evening. I wanted to show you a fly-through video of our proposed project, because it's one thing to look down even or look at 3D render still shots, it's another to actually fly through the development. I really think that it makes it come alive and really shows you the activities that we're trying to propose here. So this is 150 Prior Road, the front entry. Again, bird's eye looking down. This is a retail pad. We're going east to west on, along 150 Highway in our parking lot. That's the mixed-use building with ground floor, commercial, two stories residence above. Here's the actual corner, where we're talking about having restaurant seating area, really activating that space. This is the prior side, so we're coming back northbound towards the corner. And that's that building number one back on the south end. This is the courtyard side with the outdoor pool and amenity deck. gazebo. That's the recreational trail. The dog park we talked about. Coming back towards the front of building number one, where that's the leasing office, front entry for the L-shaped building. That should be it for the video. And I'm happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Thank you. Shannon, you have a presentation for us.
All right, good evening Commissioners, Shannon Maguire, Staff, Senior Planner. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, List of Exhibits 1 through 17.
Exhibits 1 through 17 noted and entered.
The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Missouri 150 Highway and Southwest Prior Road. And the applicant is seeking approval of a rezoning and PDP for mixed use and multifamily development. The proposed development has both a vertical and horizontal mix of uses that include apartment, offices, and some retail space. There'll be about 3900, a little over 39,000 feet of commercial space with a little over 280,000 square feet of residential space. The proposed buildings are going to range from one to four stories in total height. Some of the proposed amenities for the residential component will include a pool, clubhouse, playground, dog park, pickleball and pickleball courts, as well as pedestrian connectivity through our development, in a series of sidewalks and some walkways. Subject property is currently zoned CP2 and RP3. It is bordered by large residential lots on the north and the east side. South of the particular, or subject property is the Napa Valley Residential subdivision. And that particular subdivision does have a mix of villa standard and larger-sized estate lots. West across the, across Southwest, or yeah, across Southwest Prior is the Osage Mixed Density Residential subdivision. That subdivision, we have a mix of single-family duplexes and fourplexes. In 2007, as the applicant stated, there was an approved rezoning and PDP. Council did approve a rezoning from Ag to its current CP2 and RP3. At that time that the PDP was approved, it was a total of about 34 acres. There was about 750,000 square feet of commercial with a little over, around 400,000 of residential in the form of about 64 units. Though that residential was mostly eight plexes with a couple triflexes, maybe some duplexes in there. That PDP did expire. It is no longer valid. However, the rezoning is valid. It does not expire. Ignite Comprehensive Land Use Plan map does identify the subject property as residential one. And under a companion application on this agenda, the applicant has proposed a comprehensive plan land use amendment to reclassify the subject site from the existing residential one to a mixed-use and residential category three. The current land use map is inconsistent with the existing zoning and uses in the area. Circled in red is the Osage that was recently approved within the last few years. It currently has a residential one land use category identified on the map, but the actual use and zoning out there should be a residential category two. And then subject site shows as a residential one currently. However, the existing zoning is a commercial zoning and a medium higher-density residential zoning. So the land use comp plan, comp plan land use should show a commercial and a residential three category on it as well. I'll provide additional detail during that presentation of the companion application. Yeah, subject site is located within the M-150 corridor overlay, the CDO. The CDO does identify the intersections along 150 as activity centers, as you can see here. Subject site is located in this general area with the intersection identified as an activity center. Under the CDO, the activity centers are situated at those primary intersections along 150. We've got there. The plan, the comp plan does encourage that the, or the UDO and the overlay plan encourages at these centers to be multi-storied with vertical mixed uses with residential above the first floor. Proposed, with the proposed mix of residential and commercial, including the vertical mixed use, the subject application does meet the CDO requirements for that activity center. The proposed mixed use and multifamily development is a compatible use for the area as we do have the same type of uses throughout the, in the northeast here. You have, we have the Arbor Walk, which does have a mix of uses in there. We have the apartments here, as well as the commercial along the corridor with the single family out there as well. Additionally, the location of the development does provide an additional buffer from 150 to the existing homes to the south here. It does provide the existing homes, Napa Valley is about a little over twelve-hundred linear feet south of the intersection. So by placing the commercial mixed use toward the north with the residential multifamily in the middle, and this provides a nice stair step down from use, the higher intensity uses down to the lower intense of the single family. The proposed materials of the UDO are similar and compatible to materials that we find throughout the community and in the area. These all, the proposed materials do include brick, some board and batten siding, stucco, and some storefront glazing. Let's go through a couple of the elevations here. And then some additional renderings that the applicant has already shown you, but it's always good to see them again. The applicant did provide a sightline drawing, as you can see here. If you were a pedestrian or a person standing on the deck of the pool at Napa Valley, looking to the north, this is the sightline or view shed that you would see. Standing here, it is a lower, lower than the building, but there's a decent amount of vegetation between. It's green, so it provides a nice, you know, screening effect here. They are requesting some modifications. The first modification requested is for available minimum plant sizes to be installed during construction. Currently, the UDO does require that three-inch caliper on deciduous trees and an eight-foot tree for evergreens at the time of planting. They are proposing for deciduous shade trees to reduce that caliper size to two and a half. Deciduous ornamental trees, reduce the calipers to two inch, and evergreens, reduce the overall height at planting to six feet. This is a similar modification that we've granted in the past. It stems from the availability. Sourcing that large of trees is problematic, and they're not available locally, as well as those large trees don't survive the planning and transporting, or transplanting process, as well as the smaller trees. For those reasons, staff does find that modification request reasonable and does support the modification. Second modification is to the minimum lot size and density, keeping with similar multifamilies, multifamily communities in the area. They have requested that modification. Is a fairly common modification request, most comparable to the Village of View High, the Stags Field, and the Aria projects recently. Use-type compatible or comparable project would be the Streets of West Prior. And when comparing the density to Streets of West Prior, because it is a vertical mixed use similar to this one, that one was granted a modification to allow density of thirty-six point two. Here, they're just requesting slightly above the twelve allowed, to allow just under the fourteen units per acre, so not a huge increase. A table was provided in the staff letter that did kind of delineate additional projects that were recently approved with some more information, recent modifications that were granted to the density. They are also requesting a modification to minimum building setbacks. Currently, the UDO does require a fifty-foot building setback along major streets. In this instance, Southwest Prior Road. They are requesting a thirty-foot building setback along Prior Road for the garages, as you can see here. Utilize the site effectively. Meeting the UDO setbacks would result in pushing those garages to the center of the property and shoving the parking lot closer to Southwest Prior. That doesn't create a very welcoming and pedestrian family area. You know, good planning practices will discourage this approach, because again, it doesn't create a nice streetscape, nor is it very pedestrian friendly. Situating the structures as proposed will also act as a visual barrier between the street and the overall buildings, principal buildings. And to help soften any impact this may cause, the applicant has added additional architectural elements to the rear of the garages. This includes some windows, awnings, and stone veneer to help soften and make it doesn't look like it's the back of a garage and make it look a little bit better, as well as they're adding additional trees and shrubs along the backside as well. This modification was the same modification that was recently granted, under the same rationale as the Douglas and Tudor project that was recently approved in the last year or so. Next modification requested is again for the detached garages on the south side here. Currently, the CDO standards does require no more than thirty percent of the perimeter along that area, be the back of those garages. The applicant is requesting a slight increase to that, to thirty-three percent. That street frontage along that area is about twelve-hundred-and-thirty-seven square linear feet. The proposed garages will occupy about a hundred, a little over four hundred feet of that. And the CDO does set the maximum to thirty percent or three-hundred-and-seventy-one feet in this instance. So the minimal increase of thirty, little, around thirty-seven feet is pretty small. Again, to help soften the impact of that, they are providing additional architectural elements, as well as the additional landscaping. We do, staff does find this to be, the increase to be negligible, and does make the most effective use of the site, while still meeting the intent of the UDO standards, or the CDO standards, sorry. And we do support that modification. As the applicant has stated, a neighborhood meeting was held on June 8th. Reported neighborhood concerns did include trash compactor location, garage locations, traffic, commercial tenants. With that, with the conditions as outlined here, and in the staff letter, the application does meet the requirements of the UDO and Design and Construction Manual, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Shannon. Do we have any comments from the public on this application? Done. I will move to the commission for questions. Commissioner Kitchens, you're out there in Zoom land. We'll start with you.
Giving the easy one, Mr. Chair. Sounds good. Yeah, this question is going to be, I believe, for staff, and if not, then for the applicant. Hey, Shannon, what's our percentage of green space on this to the rest of the facility?
I do not have that readily in front of me. I can look that up for you.
Cool. Then should we just move on to the questions? You can get that back later?
Yes.
That's what we're thinking. Okay, sounds good. All right. This question is going to be for the applicant. I can't see if the applicant's there or not, so I'm guessing.
Go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. Which is a terrible background. Thank you so much for choosing Lee Summit, first of all. Really, really beautiful building, in my opinion. A couple of questions about these beautiful buildings. The Napa Valley neighborhood that you butt to the south, I know that neighborhood very well. I also know that their yards are what I would consider on the smaller side. This, I'm glad to hear there's a buffer on the south side there, and that you guys thought about landscaping to a very high point. I mean, it looks good, and adding some architectural elements in there as well. However, I'm still a little concerned with the elevation from that neighborhood. Their pool area is right next to where you'll have the trees and everything. The old growth trees, and you may have said this, but help me out here. Are we continuing with the old growth trees there, or are we taking out the majority of them and replanting?
Yes, Commissioner. This is Matt Tapagriff from Riley Property Group. And a very great question. I'm glad you brought that up, because we are keeping that existing drainage swale, but all the mature existing trees south of there, both on our property and on Napa Valley, will remain.
Okay, perfect. Now, that same one, your elevation's on that back side. Tell me again how many stories we're looking at on your southern end?
That is three stories. Sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, no, I'm sorry. I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, three stories.
Okay, so it's a three-story, and that L shape, if I'm looking at it correctly, it abuts only on the nor, excuse me, the southwest corner of what I would say the setback is to that area, correct? That's the only corner in the southwest that has a building of three stories. The rest is retention, pool, park, green space, et cetera, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. South of that proposed new Osage Drive, that is the only three-story building.
Then let's go ahead to your east here. Know that facility, listen to me, that residence pretty well. What are we abutting to their property to your east, excuse me, not to your west, the single-family residence over there?
Yes.
If I'm reading correctly, that's going to be, no, no, it's a delay in Zoom. I'm sorry. I keep interrupting you as well. But it looks like we're putting some parking right up against there. Am I correct on that? How far is, how far away are we there?
Let me ask our civil engineer, Commissioner. Hold on.
Great.
Come up forward to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. Mark Brewer with Schlegel Associates, 14920 West 107th and Lenexa, Kansas. Don't have that dimension off the top of my head, but I believe it was thirty feet. Sounds right.
So what's that going to look like for, from the property to the east on that elevation?
That buffer requirement there, developer worked pretty closely with the property owner to develop what that looked like, but that's going to be a combination of a privacy fence, as well as additional landscaping to meet that buffer requirement.
And our property owner there was happy with the outcome of that?
I didn't have to speak to that.
Yes, Commissioner. This is Matt Tap again, Griffin Riley Property Group. Yes, we had conversations with the owner, and he's okay with that, that assemblage.
Okay, good deal. I'm glad that you guys have worked so hard with the community on this one, because frank, let's be frank, this is something that's not been done in that area before. However, it does align with our comprehensive plan, in my opinion. And it looks like when we put it in there, we've done our homework and really, really pushed forward on that. Okay, I would say last but not least on this one, I'm guessing that we have all the correct ins and outs for fire control, things of that nature, and your facility has capability for tornado sheltering in it, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Where is the sheltering location of the facility, if you don't mind me asking, please?
And I will actually defer to our architect, Roseman and Associates, on that question.
Excellent.
Mr., name and address for the record, please.
Gabe Vogel, Roseman Associates, 1526 Grand Boulevard, KC Mo. Storm shelter, we would have one in the mixed, the mixed-use building is under grade. You can get to grade is where the storm shelter would be.
Is that it? There's no residential sheltering capability within the buildings, nor for the shops themselves?
Yeah, just for.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, Commissioner, again, Matt Tap. That shelter would be for commercial use and as well as the residents across the site.
Okay, so we have a centralized one, then. We're not implementing each of the buildings, correct?
That would be a center location.
And, and I didn't miss here. That was below grade, correct?
It is. It's a, it's a three-four split, but yes, it is below grade.
Okay, that'll, that'll work for me. Sorry, backgrounds and emergency management. That many people in that area, I want to make sure that they're safe. So thank you very much. Shannon?
I do have an answer to your open space. Lot one has a fifty-eight point nine percent open space. Lot two is fifty-two percent. Lot three is thirty-four point five, with lot four rounding out the bunch at forty-two point seven.
So we're looking at an average of what, forty-three, forty-four on the map?
I'm a planner, not a mathematician, but that sounds about right.
All right, sounds good. Okay, this suffices me. I'll save my comments for the round there. Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Rader?
Thank you, Chair. My question is for whatever staff can help me. Shannon, I hope it's you. In our comprehensive plan, I tried to look at that this morning to see that area of the subject area and along 150 Highway. So in the comprehensive plan, does, can you tell me if most of the property along the frontage of 150 was zoned CP2, some kind of commercial? I know, I know there are residential areas in there. I know there's agricultural, you know, big lot, lots along 150 that's been there for, you know, many years. But basically in the comprehensive plan, what, what, how was that laid out for the future?
So currently, the comp plan shows a mix of residential and commercial in that immediate facility. Commercial in red. This green here is the placeholder. That will get switched to commercial when it does develop. So we got a commercial along in the mixed-use Arbor Walk area. The church here does have a portion of commercial as well.
This Crane Road, what subdivision is that? Is that?
It's an older, larger lot subdivision.
Okay. Okay. Do we know if Clover and Hive, that subdivision there, was originally zoned CP2? And it was converted to?
I do not recall what Osage was originally, but it was rezoned to the RP3.
Okay, so it probably wasn't.
Ag. I'm remembering correctly.
Okay. Let me see. I think, okay, this, my next ones are for the applicant. I know that you mentioned that you had a commercial realtor working with you on getting businesses in there, but do you have any idea of what you think you would be, you know, envisioning to go in as your commercial property or your, you know, the businesses?
Yes, great question, Commissioner. We're doing great emphasis on local chain.
Yes, great question, Commissioner. We're doing great emphasis on local chains or local restaurant groups, both in the retail pads as well as the ground floor commercial. It really just depends on what their preference is, whether it's more of a, up in my neck of the woods, I'm a Northlander, but Summit Grill in Gladstone, if you've been there, more of a mixed-use, you know, ground floor, tall ceilings, or there's a retail pad as well for their own space. But we're really targeting those local groups, restaurants, as well as some service companies as well, whether it's blush, boot camp, or nails, or you know, those type of things for the residents and the residences in the area.
And can you tell me what you think your rents will be?
I cannot answer that right now. We have looked at comparisons in the area, and, you know, it's hard to say at this point. We just have to, you know, do some number crunching and try and be consistent with the market. But I believe the 150 corridor newer retail space would be plus over $20 a square foot, triple net. So probably my guess right now would be 24, but I mean, it could be higher.
Okay, so let me ask you this. You're, I'm guessing you're gonna go along with what's trending in commercial, but what about your residential, your luxury apartments?
The rent rates there, Commissioner?
Yeah, rent rates.
Those, again, will be consistent with Streets of West Prior and other upper Class A style apartments. So, you know, it depends on the size of the unit. Studios will be a little higher rent rate per square foot versus a one-bedroom, two-bedroom. But, you know, we're looking at probably in the range of lower thousands, maybe dipping into the high nines for smaller studios, up to 1,800, maybe more, 2,000 or more, depending on the size of the unit, right? That's being consistent with our echelon that we sold on down 150 and other similar projects in Lee Summit.
Is your echelon well underway?
It's complete. We actually sold it a year ago or a year and a half ago. It's behind Alder's Gate.
Oh, okay.
To give you bearings perhaps.
Oh, yes, okay. And then elevators, will you have elevators in these units?
Yes, elevator served on every building with residents.
Okay, let me see. I think that's all I have. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Arth?
I'll start with questions for staff. Do we have a current chart of our apartments that we approved? And we've seen that from time to time, the ones that have been approved and the ones that have been started, and to get a total of the units that we've approved?
We do have that, and I'll defer that to Director Nassif.
Good evening. Amy Nassif, Deputy Director. We do maintain one. We're working on having an update on those things later this fall, and we'll also have one at the end of the year. We can certainly provide what our last update was for you all.
Okay, what about occupancy rates with the apartments in Lee Summit? Do we have anything current on that?
We do not have current occupancy rates. What we normally had and studied with our number of units was our vacancy rate numbers with the, and we can provide that too, what our last count was with the last study report that was done.
Oh, regarding parking, I don't remember the number. We probably have that on one of these slides. There's, what is, what is it per, what is the required per unit of parking?
So it's gonna be based on the, for residential is different than commercial. Commercial's gonna be five per thousand for medical type uses, four per thousand for your retail office type use or your general office type use. Then when it comes to the residential portion, it's gonna be based on the type of unit. So if you have a loft or type unit, it is a one. If it is a one-bedroom or two-bedroom, it's 1.5 per unit. If it's a three-bedroom, it's gonna be two per unit. And then there's a guest parking requirement of 0.5 per unit.
Okay.
This particular project is 100% parked, with no reduction.
Okay, so I guess what I was trying to figure out, and I know you said you don't do math, and I can't do that in my head that quickly. I was just trying to figure out how much of that total parking spaces is allocated for the residents and then how much for the, for the commercial part? I was just curious.
The overall number is gonna be a mix in that mixed-use area where it's not gonna be separated by stall in that area. So taking the square footage of the commercial and the square footage of the residential and calculating the number as a whole, they are self-parked.
Okay, okay. Regarding that neighborhood, the neighborhood study, you guys provided a report of that. I was curious, the overall, the overall attitude toward the project, was there any negativity or overall was it more positive than negative?
Are you referring to the neighborhood meeting?
I'm sorry, yes, the neighborhood meeting.
I will refer that to the applicant as staff doesn't participate in that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. That's a great question as well. We did receive, I think there's about 40, maybe 50 folks in attendance. A lot of them, rightfully so, had concerns about traffic, and I kind of highlighted those concerns. But we've had a number of reach-outs to the folks that were really vocal, as well as that night, talking about those things and going through our studies. And, you know, we worked with a couple post-meeting and really resolved their issues. So we're hoping that we're being good neighbors and listening to them, and we had modified our site plan and building materials and heights and everything else to be in accordance with what they're wanting to have on the site.
Thank you.
Yes.
I guess I, since you're up here, I'll ask.
Yeah, sure.
What is the overall percentage of commercial versus residential? I see these numbers, but I'm trying to think. It's about 39,000 square feet to 300 square feet, so about a little less than 10%. Is that, would that be correct?
It would be actually a little more. You're looking at around 284,000 square feet of residential and 39,000 square feet of retail, between the two pads and the ground floor.
Okay, okay. And so regarding that building four, and then we've got lots, building four, and then we've got lots three and four, where the, lots three and four will be commercial, and then the PMX will be in that building four. So traffic would come in off of 150, is that right, 150? And then is there anything, any mechanism in the routing of traffic to keep, I'm sorry, you may not be able to hear me very well. Is there any mechanism within the routing of the traffic to keep people that don't live there away from those other buildings and perhaps away from that common, the green space?
So if I'm hearing the question correctly, trying to differentiate the commercial patrons and the residents of the apartments, if you can see on the site plan, and I don't know, Shannon, Mr. McGuire had a really nice laser, I don't know if I have access to that or not, but... So I'll just kind of guide you real quick on the traffic flow, and we also have Amy McCurdy, our traffic engineer here, in attendance as well. But this access point here on 150 is a ride-in, ride-out only. And so most of the traffic, I would say, who's not coming in right in or right out, will come in on Prior and then use the turn lane and come in here and go through here. There's a little bit of topography here, so this really is not inviting to commercial patrons, nor is this right here, basically, there's a natural break-off. And we talked about having this extend down to ASH Drive, but just the way the curvature of the road, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense. So that's why we did that, actually, is a good point, is to try and differentiate between the commercial and residential. And so in terms of the green space, we right now have pickleball court shown there, and we're exploring different ideas on that. But we are also firm believers in green space, and we've just kind of looked at different ways to program or make that open space. And so there is a grade change here, Commissioner, from the top side to the lower side. And so the connectivity there probably would not be there for the commercial use. The residences will have access through an elevator and stairwell here. So I think this green space, this area would mainly be used for the residences.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And so one final question. Do you have intention of selling this development?
We are in the business to develop and hold. We don't intend to sell, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Arth? Ask him, you wanna pass for a minute, you said?
Commissioner Janiford?
Thank you, Chair. So this is for Matt, the applicant again. So bear with me, I have scribbles all over my paper, but I'll start with the first one. Pedestrian access and safety. So you have this model that it's a live-work-play. In my mind, I'm seeing you've got the residential in Plan South. I anticipate a family, a couple, whoever, going up to, say, building two or three or whatever, right? And you had mentioned the Streets of West Prior. I imagine like grocery stores, right? So what is the connection between the south lot and the north lot in terms of safety and cross-axis through the Osage? I anticipate that through road is intended to attach to whatever development is next door, not knowing what it could be, what kind of traffic impact it would have. Can you describe what kind of safety pedestrian thoughts you have considered in this project?
Yes, that's actually a great question. That's something we consider in all of our developments. The last question I'll kind of address, so yes, that Osage Drive, we are following the alignment of the city's long-range plans to have that road eventually continue on as development occurs to meet up with the church. So as those parcels would develop, I think the vision would be that that would connect up. In terms of connectivity, we have sidewalks throughout the site. They're kind of hard to see, so I'll attempt to use the laser pointer, but if you can kind of see these black line areas, these are all sidewalk connectors coming in onto our site. And in terms of that, then we would have a connection here as well. Here, along Osage Drive, I think that's what you were asking about on building one to get to the commercial as well as building two and three. And there is sidewalks through this green space, and there'll be connectivity through here. So we do believe in connectivity between, obviously, the residents and the commercial, because we want, those are all, those feed off one another. The commercial follows the rooftops and in that order.
So at the connection that you just kind of traced over from building one to building two sidewalk area, that's really, on this plan, it looks close to the intersection, but I know it's a little bit further than what the eye seems. But is there gonna be some kind of crosswalk signal? This might be getting a little bit in the weeds, but I'm just kind of wanting to have a better understanding of, you know, the connection you've got with the live-work-play concept.
No, that's a great question as well. We don't envision a crosswalk signal there. We don't, I don't think there'd be enough pedestrian traffic to warrant that. We're always happy to look into it, but we don't believe, because the number of residences, I know Gabe Tovar, our architect, I'm trying to remember how many units in that building, 77 units. You know, you're probably talking at max 100 people, and we want to promote that connectivity, but I don't think there'd be that much pedestrian at any given time to warrant an actual signal. But yeah, we will have a clear path there for pedestrians to go from one side of Osage Drive to the other to get to the ground floor commercial and the pads, too.
Okay. Thank you. That helps give a little bit more clarification of what's going on there. The other question, I noted one of the concerns with the neighborhood meeting was maintaining some of the... So right now, I see that you only have that southwest, or I guess be southeast corner vegetation to remain. The amount that's taken off on what would be the southwest, is that being displaced with new vegetation? Is it like a one-for-one?
And actually, if I can try and show you the actual landscape, landscape plan, that shows a little bit clearer as to what we're keeping, that green slide I had, if you remember.
Okay.
So this is, this landscape plan shows the vegetation a little better, both existing and planned. And this green area is all being preserved. You can kind of see the crosshatch area of existing vegetation hugging that stream. That's all to be preserved within that stream setback. And this is all of our new landscaping all through here that is elevated and spruced more so than the minimum requirements, as well as in this little corner here. And then all along that east side, as we mentioned before with the neighbor, we're talking about increased landscape buffer as well as a fence, and then also a fence, a split rail fence through here on the retail pad, kind of like on Journey Church, if you've been in that corridor. They have a really nice fence system.
Okay, so you're matching the adjacent vocabulary?
Yes.
So for vegetation, I assume that it's gonna be maintained by the developer, development, right?
We are developer and owner, so yes, it's owner responsibility.
Okay. And I believe the last question I have, so building two through five, no, two through four, yes, they've got internal garages facing the Central Park. Did you have an elevation of what that looks like?
Let me see if I can...
I may have missed it.
Oh. I don't, because the renders we have, Commissioner, are all here, so we have building four on the corner here and then building one. We do not have elevation renders. We have the elevation drawings from the staff report. Shannon, if you want to pull that up.
Or really, any of them have the garages? I just wanted to see what it looks like in relation to the overall facade.
That is the middle elevation drawing, Commissioner. That's building two and three back elevation, so that would be the tuck under park, tuck under garages.
And so on the building two and three, the entry into the building is underneath the blue swath, correct? Oh, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bimbro?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Hannah, I got a question for you. They're asking for a change in the setback, I believe it was the RP4 along Prior, from a 50-foot to a 30-foot, correct?
Correct.
And the lot to the north of that, which is gonna be PMX, what is the zoning requirement setback for that?
The principal structure setback is still gonna be at 50 feet. Parking lot setback's 20 feet.
We have two different requirements, or is it the same requirement and it's just the garage that's making?
Just the garages that trigger that 50-foot setback. It's a structure setback.
Okay, thank you. Question for ownership. Just a quick clarification on Commissioner Janiford questions. Are the buildings gonna share amenities? So is building one gonna be able to go up to the pickleball court, and is building two and three gonna be able to go down south to the pool?
Yes. Those are shared amenities.
They're all gonna have shared amenities. Okay, thank you. That's all I had, questions, Wes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bimbro, or excuse me, Commissioner Tuzinski?
You wanna go again?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for staff and the traffic engineer, Amy and Susan. I really, you guys all know I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do want to really talk a little bit about the signal, or not the signal, the intersection at Prior and the student development. I think it's Osage. Being a ride-in, ride-out on 150, that can be used as an in, totally get it. It can be used as an out to go west. But really, anyone coming from the east is gonna have to use that intersection. And also, anyone else wanting to go north is gonna have to use that intersection to go out. People coming from the north going south is gonna have to use that intersection. And I was looking at the traffic study, and the volumes don't seem to really require a signal. It doesn't meet the warrants for that. But as these new developments come in, I mean, when the traffic study was done, did they look at these restaurants, did they look at these sites as restaurants? Did they look at them as some small, I mean, how does this all work? Plus with the 100, was it 253 units total using that one intersection plus the restaurants and everything? I kind of just wanted to really think about it. Plus, future development to the west, potentially using that, too. And people at Lee Summit use their restaurants. I mean, it's, they're almost always busy, and so there are gonna be people coming from the north, too. So I don't know. I just... I don't know, I just wanted to, to kind of pick Susan's brain a little bit, pick your brain, Amy, just to talk about just current, future conditions, long-term. And when, when do you think a signal would potentially be required for that?
Ask you a quick question, you were hiding behind everybody back there. Did you swear in? Okay, can you give us your name and address, please?
Amy McCurdy with McCurdy Engineers. My address is 420 West 123rd Terrace, Kansas City, Missouri, 64145.
Thank you.
Okay, to answer your question, I was really hoping we'd get a traffic question, because I was sitting back there, I reread my report, I was prepared for it. So, okay, to answer kind of some of your questions, and feel free to stop and interrupt me as I'm going, if you would like elaboration on anything. So we looked at the MODOT signal up there at 150, the right-in, right-out. We looked at our new drive, the Prior Road and Osage, which connects to the east, to the existing development which is being built. And then we looked down south where it tees at Cass Jackson, oh, I'm so sorry. And one of the things we looked at in discussions before we even got started, in discussions with Susan, was kind of looking at this pretty conservatively, and we discussed it with MODOT also. So some of the things we did when we looked at the trip generation that we might have done differently in other places, was since there is a mixed use here, we didn't discount the trips. We went as head and said, what if, worst-case scenario, no one, no one from our multifamily is getting out and walking to our other businesses? What if everything ends up being a car trip to our four different, separate land uses here? What would that look like? Which, you know, generally on this type of things, we assume that 5%, 10%, something like that will, you know, be a trip to the retail, the multifamily, and stop by the bank. We said, nope, let's look at them all separately, kind of look at this as a worst-case situation for trap, for trip generation. So with that, we have our volumes, we looked at them AM, PM during our peak hours for our worst-case scenario. One thing that I think is really interesting about 150, that we don't see a lot of other places, is how directionally split it is. I mean, you guys know your city, you drive it. AM, we're heading east, wait, west. Forgot which way is north. We head west, you know. PM, we're heading east, back to the heart of Lee Summit. So that made for some pretty interesting trip generation distributions as we looked at that operation of that signal of 150. And I know you're specifically asking about Osage, so I'll get, I'll jump down to that too. So when we looked at that, and we discussed it with MODOT, discussed it with city staff, you know, we came up with some ways to improvement, especially based on our public meeting, with some of the concerns we had. And a lot of what we're seeing out there is some things that are not necessarily high-dollar improvements. They can start immediately giving improvements to the intersection. Yeah, southbound, we'd like to expand those turn lanes, but that's a very high-dollar expense, and is an existing issue, but, you know, we can add a right turn lane, we can extend that. We can add an overlap, so that signal functions better and gets people through the intersection better. So that brings us down, does, does that make sense as I'm, okay. I don't want to go to, like, I'll talk about this, I will read you guys my report, it'll be so boring, but I would be so happy, so I'm trying not to do that. So as we looked at that Osage Drive, you're not, with existing volumes, we're not meeting it, assuming that the development to the east is all built out. We won't meet it. Even with ours, we don't end up meeting it. The threshold for putting a signal in is pretty high for the warrants, because we don't want unnecessary ones. It makes people not want to obey them. It's an added cost for the city. It slows down traffic unnecessarily, as they said at a traffic signal where there's no one here, you know? So, but we also looked at kind of a future scenario. What happens in 20 years? What does it look like at that intersection? And we aren't expected to meet the signal warrants then either for that. A lot of it is that a big chunk of people will be able to come in through that right turn, that right off 150, particularly since, you know, our AM traffic having that retail portion, and having, you know, reach, or AM traffic heading west, that we won't be bringing a lot of people into the site in the AM through that. Then in the PM, when everyone's heading east again, you know, one of our traffic volumes are heading east, people exiting the site will be able to use that right turn. So luckily, with where we're positioned on 150, and where we're positioned with the volumes, and with it being retail that has a higher PM trip generation, we're actually right where we need to be for trips to come in, make a right turn in, make a right turn out, which alleviates some of the strain on turning vehicles at the intersection. They'll still be going straight through it, you know, during the PM, but that's, you know, more efficient than turning left or right at the signal. So I, I feel like that was a very complicated way of saying, no, we are not expected to warrant a signal there at Osage, which also, we don't really want one. We want a certain distance between our signals for operation, and we're, you know, that would not be a advisable distance. I'm sorry, I really feel like I'm over-talking here. Did that answer one of your questions at least?
I'll just add one more thing about what type of businesses, when, when this is all like conceptual, you know, we make assumptions on what's going to be there. You know, they assume there's a bank, they assume there's a high-turnover sit-down restaurant, and then 22,500 feet of strip retail plaza. So if they were to say their sit-down restaurant turns into a Starbucks, I'd be like, yeah, we need to reevaluate the traffic study. So I mean, we kind of, we kind of monitor that as they get tenants and things develop, but strip retail plaza kind of, it covers a large amount of things. The other thing I was going to talk about was overlap. She mentioned overlap, and I don't know if the people know what that is. So an overlap is, it's a way to get more people through a signal. So if you look at a westbound 150 left turn, the northbound right turn gets a green arrow, so they don't have to stop, look at traffic, and then go. So it's basically like just shooting a lot of traffic through very quickly. Currently, we allow a U-turn for that westbound 150 movement. If we put that right turn overlap in, we have to take that conflict out. So it's a balancing act, do you want to push the more northbound right turners through? Or do you want to allow the U-turners to come into the site? So again, that's a MODOT decision, because they manage that signal, but we are aware of that conflict, and, you know, we would never have the U-turn and the overlap allowed at the same time.
I don't, and I don't see at this point that either these potential future restaurant sites are either showing any kind of drive-through or anything like that. And Shannon, I don't think they can, can they put a drive-through in? I mean, do each of these sites have to come in again, and could they be reconfigured from this?
Since they're not showing a drive-through, now that we would consider that a substantial change and required to come back before you as a new PDP.
But then trigger Susan to be able to look at it, right? Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, why? Right. Right. Yeah, that's very, I wouldn't say very similar, but it is a similar characteristic. Oh no, there will be. I, I believe there is discussion of putting in a marked crosswalk there. I don't believe it's shown on this plan simply because it's not.
A, a signal, a pedestrian signal there. The crosswalk.
So we have two different types of pedestrian signals that we do. The ones I'm familiar with that have been put in in Overland Park recently. So I don't know if everyone's familiar with downtown Overland Park. They have a hawk signal there crossing Metcalf, which is approximately $100,000 signal. You push the button, all traffic stops, it's overhead for pedestrians crossing it, for pedestrians crossing Metcalf, which, that's the typical use for a signal like that, is a major roadway. The other option would be the rectangular flashing beacons, which is more of the pedestrian, the yellow pedestrian crossing sign, that you push a button, and then it kind of blinks yellow for across, for a crossing. That would be more appropriate here. We don't have pedestrians out there to count. And a lot of times when we talk about pedestrian warrants, warranting things, it's, our main focus is children particularly, because children, you know, I'm a mom. My kids don't always look, they don't think to look, even the ones that are in college. So adults, you know, we have much more higher functioning brains, we think to look, we can judge distance of cars more. And since this, you know, since this residential development definitely would be more for adults rather than children, you know, school-aged children, the focus would be more on like looking at some enhanced signing and pavement marking for the crossing.
Mark Rurisch, Schlegel Associates, I believe that minimum throw distance was 150 feet.
I have a couple of questions. One is around the, it looks like there is a sidewalk on 150 Highway that's only five feet. I'm curious why we're not doing a 10-foot walkway on that. I know that that's probably what we require, but just knowing, you know, I think we had this conversation with Osage and others, and I guess the concern is we're adding a lot of residential volume and now commercial, so I think you're going to increase potential for bike and walk traffic.
There, there is a five-foot sidewalk along that north property line there, and it does match up with the, the existing Osage.
Yeah, I understand. I think in the last conversation we had about this, that's what we require. My concern is that we're not, like, on Longview Road, on other walk roadways, we have 10-foot walkways for biking and all that kind of stuff, which I know we're going to see on that, that roadway. So I'm just concerned we're not being a little more forward-thinking about that and putting in a 10-foot walkway. Thoughts? Yes, thank you.
Normally, we have a five-foot sidewalk on one side and a 10-foot shared-use path on the other side. I assume that's what we have on 150, but that is MODOT's roadway? Yeah, I'm not familiar.
Mr. Chair, point of order. For some reason, the microphones aren't coming on, online, whenever we hear anyone speak from the dais, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, my microphone's on. I'm speaking into it, hi.
Mine wasn't on, sorry.
Terry was the one exception.
Thank you.
Sorry to bother everyone. Sorry, Mr. Chair, to interrupt.
No problem.
Sue Piles, Development Engineering Manager, there is a 10-foot shared-use path on the north side of M150 in that area.
Okay. I'll reserve my comments for later, I guess. Other question I had was around Lot Three and Four, where we're talking about some kind of commercial property there. Are those for, this is for the owner, Shannon, sorry, thanks. Mr. Tap. Are those for sell, or are you guys going to own and lease the land? I'm just curious about how you're going to manage that.
All, all the above. It's for sale or for lease? Depends on the user mix, or who is, who comes before us. Some retailers, restaurants prefer that they own the real estate, some don't, it just depends on their preference.
So are you going to not develop those lots until there's something, so there will be no parking, road through, all that kind of stuff?
Now, I believe the phasing, we're utilizing most of the parking. So as staff, I think, indicated, we still have to go through FDP process. And if, let's say, Dutch Brothers or somebody, I don't know, that requires a drive-through, we go back through PDP and FDP. So the phasing will be more than likely the mixed-use building in the residential, because again, retail follows rooftops, not the other way around. And then the retail would follow, you know, relatively quickly behind that. We are already talking to retailers, by the way, on those pads.
Yeah, my concern is that we're 10 down, 10 years down the road, all the other stuff is there. There's nothing there, those are just dirt lots, and we don't have a throughway because we didn't build it, because we didn't need to.
Definitely, we'll have that connectivity, because we want that connectivity for Buildings Two and Three. Or sorry, yeah, should be Two and Three, yes, to make sure it's Two and Three, Two and Three to get up to 150.
But there'll be some kind of throughway there, not necessarily looking finished like that.
That is what's contemplated there, Commissioner, yes.
Okay, great, uh, thank you. I think that answers that question. And I think those, oh, I know what my other question was. When you look at the plan on the east side, and you know how you had contemplated finishing that road between, I guess, Building Three and Two to connect down, but then you didn't. It looks like, you know, when I'm looking at the foot traffic, or the bike traffic, or the scooter traffic to get to the pool, that's all going to be on that east side, because that's the easiest way to get there from the north, and those two buildings are kind of aligned to that. Kind of, I know you have the walkway path on the other end of the development. I'm curious about, it looks like there's a sidewalk maybe there that goes to nowhere through the street, but it doesn't actually connect over, it looks like there's some drainage going through there. I'm just curious, are you going to put a walkway through there for people to actually move to that side of the development?
So there is quite a bit of pedestrian sidewalks throughout the, the site as a whole. Some of my later slides and the companion application will highlight that. There are crosswalks on, at the intersections. And Susan Berry can correct me if I'm wrong, but a mid-block pedestrian crosswalk is ill-advisable. I'm just giving it, it's a conflict point, we don't typically see those crosswalks in the middle of a block like that. So we do have connectivity, here, well, is here, and there is sidewalk that comes up along this hole.
Okay, you do recognize though that people are going to be walking through that area, regardless of if you want to put a crosswalk there. I'm not suggesting that you put a crosswalk in the middle of the roadway. I'm just, for traffic, like foot traffic through that, those two buildings, people are not going to go around the outside of the building, they're going to come right through there. So I guess that's my concern, is that, I mean, if you put grass there or whatever, I mean, people are going to move. So I guess that's my concern is that, I mean, if you put grass there or whatever, I mean, people are going to move through there, so.
You raise great points, for sure. If you think about that building two, the north side facing one fifty, it's all tuck under garages on the ground floor anyway. So most of residences are on the backside facing Osage Drive and going up with elevator service and stairwell down to the ground floor directly to that sidewalk that runs along Osage. So they would, they would more than likely take elevator stairs down to the ground floor on the south side if they so chose to go to the pool or some other amenity on the south side. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions, Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Arthur, did you have a clarification you needed?
Yes, this is for the applicant, Mr. Tap. You mentioned the Echelon and that you sold that. But you aren't going to sell, sell this. Is it a change in, in your philosophy?
Actually, I thought about that. I'm glad you brought that back up. So for clarity's sakes, our intent on the onset is to own, hold, keep, and maintain the property. We always follow market conditions. So I always like to say, for instance, if you built a house, you moved into it and in two, three, five years, whatever, someone came to you and said, I'll pay twice the amount of what it's worth, you would take that offer considered seriously. So I say our intent is always to build and hold, always. However, we are market driven. So if Lee Summit, which it is a very hot multifamily market, we would have to consider offers.
Okay, thank you.
We're not, we're not, we don't intend to do that on the onset. We were based out of Lee Summit. We want to be owners of property around Lee Summit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Amy, how far out is the study for the commissioners to see of what our stock is? What, I don't know if we're doing vacancy rates or occupancy rates, how we're doing that. How far out is that study?
We don't have a full study underway, but we can certainly, we're working on getting data together. We were going to do, provide you with just a year-end report in January. But we can certainly get you some data together well before then. The last one we went through and I was looking through some records was end of May. So we can update that raw data for you and probably provide it for you by next week.
Anything else while we're in public hearing? Commissioner Trafton.
Sorry. Amy, I know we've talked about the UDO requirements around landscaping and the fact that we are a lot of times making exceptions to the UDO. And we've talked about changing the UDO and is that part of our conversation coming up in October?
Hopefully, hopefully so. We did just have a meeting with the CEDC last night. And several of our UDO updates, they do include our landscape section with, because we have so many concerns and the development community does too, with the difficulties with like our caliber size and the placement of fencing that actually went through last night for draft for us to continue working on and be presenting to you this fall.
Thank you. I thought that was. I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trafton. Commissioner Kitchens, I can't look down the dais and see you, so I'm trying not to leave you out. Do you have anything else before we close the public hearing?
No, I don't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We will close the public hearing and open up for discussions. We'll flip down the other way, Commissioner Tuzinski.
No additional comments. Thank you.
Mr. Benbrook.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just really one comment. It's more of a general comment. I know our zoning drives are setbacks, but it seems like in certain situations where we have multiple different zonings dictating multiple different setbacks that we might look into finding a rule around that or finding a rule to make that more cohesive, whether we do it on certain roadways or not. Looking down prior, I know we have several different zoning situations where it seems like our setbacks are zigzagging back and forth. And this isn't particularly driven by this project, more of a general observation than anything. And maybe this was better for general comments at the end of the session. But I wanted to say it now before I forgot it. Might be beneficial for us to, to look at a cohesive way to align zoning setbacks by roadway. Visually, as you look down the road, obviously, in my, my opinion, it would be more appealing. I did want to say I appreciate the attention to the neighbors' concerns regarding this development, adding additional landscape within the parking areas, doing some additional architecture to the garages. I appreciate the efforts that you're making. It does look like a very nice development. I am glad to see the apartments not going in North Lee Summit. I'm glad to see them going in South Lee Summit because I think North Lee Summit's about rented to the max at this point. So that's all I had to say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Janet Ford.
No additional comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Trafton.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, Mr. Tap and Griffin Riley, I mean, I appreciate the work that's been done on this project. It does seem like a more balanced project for this property. I like that you're not trying to overwhelm it with commercial. I think there's a nice balance there. I love how you're trying to engage the nature and, you know, create common spaces for the resident. I think it's going to be a lovely project, so I'm excited that you guys are doing it. And I appreciate your commitment to Lee Summit, so thank you for that. I do think you should consider a pedestrian connection between that parking lot and that sidewalk. But, you know, you know, just something to think about, so thank you for that. And I think those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Arthur.
First of all, I did want to say that this is a very nice project. It's, it's beautiful. The buildings are beautiful, the landscaping, the layout of it. However, I'm concerned about us making zoning change when we don't really have a count of where we are with the apartments. I, the comprehensive plan, I, I view it like this. I view the comprehensive plan as something that we are, that's congruent with our zoning. And then this is all based on our, upon our vision for Lee Summit. And we've compiled this comprehensive plan. It was compiled by the city council, planning commission, staff and residents of Lee Summit. There's been a lot of concern in our community about the apartments. And I, one of the things that does concern me is that the more we put in our community, the less opportunity we have for people to have homeownership. And homeownership is what creates wealth. And so we, by making these decisions, are taking away the opportunity for people to get into a home and own it. And I, I think the reason that it's concerning is because the residents did participate in this comprehensive plan and they are told that we're building luxury apartments. And the problem may not be when the, the complex comes in. It comes in when it's sold. If it's sold to some, somebody that doesn't have a vested interest in our community, we end up getting, it, it looks bad. I've lived in that situation. And so I'm just saying, I'm, I know that it's not up to us to say, put the brakes on it. I'm just saying that I'm very concerned about it. I, I think we need to look at, we have this work, play and stay. Well, however, as just was said earlier, we're, people are leaving to work because we don't have commercial. And so to make a decision, for me to make a decision to move that commercial to another, another use when we don't have people working here, I think that's really hard. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rader.
Thanks, Chair. I just want to say that I completely agree with what Commissioner Arthur just said. And just to add a little bit to that, I know how hard it is to create a development, bring a development and all the work that everyone does, the developers, the staff and everyone that works on these developments. However, I just don't feel like this is a, it's a beautiful project, but I just don't think that this is the place. And I feel like if we continue to keep giving away our commercial property to multifamily apartments, we're not going to achieve the things that we really want to achieve here. We won't have a work, a live, work and play because not everyone has, you know, minimum wage jobs. So I envisioned this area to be a more of a commercial area along one fifty highway where we have CPA firms and attorney firms or big box stores. And, and, you know, since the bad part of this land is zoned RP three, I think, it would be, to me, it seemed like a great opportunity for the missing middle housing, which is town homes, home, owner occupied town homes. And then a little mix of the commercial and maybe some retail on the front. But anyway, I, I can't in good conscience support this project just because I feel like there's, again, we don't, we don't really know where we are with our apartments. And it seems like a lot of the projects that come before us are apartments. And I, you know, I'm a big believer in homeownership and the wealth piece as well. So anyway, I do appreciate all of you and every, all the work that you have done. So thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Kitchens, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand where Commissioner Rader and Commissioner Arthur are coming from. They, they absolutely have some great points about the community. I first off would like to, oh, there we go, I'm back. I'd like to thank the applicant for considering Lee Summit. I love the project. I think it's beautiful. I actually do think it's the right spot. I think a lot of times we get tied up with how much, how many apartments we have across the whole city. And that's a huge concern and I'm glad staff's on it, quite frankly. Staff has done a very good job keeping us surprised. However, Commissioner Benbrook brought up a very valid point when he said it's in the right spot. It's on the south end of the city. Now, we, we need some of this down there. I love the mixed use aspect. I think you guys did a great job, the applicant, excuse me, did a fantastic job working with the community down there. Will we have detractors? We will always have detractors, one way or the other, pro or con. And as far as the, the shopping goes, we have Walmart just down the way to, right off of one fifty. We know, or, excuse me, one fifty and two ninety-one. We know that two ninety-one corridor has some more single family home projects coming into it as well. I am not as worried about the single family home aspect there as I am become, of becoming stuck in the single family home aspect. Or basically having an area where all we have is single family homes. There's no shopping, there's no grocery stores. There's no individual area for people to go and relax. They have to drive halfway across the city. I believe that's part of what the comprehensive plan has shown, is that we do have satellites throughout Lee Summit. Areas that are in and of themselves almost secluded from the rest of the city. We all feel it. As we develop, that will become less and less likely. But the comprehensive plan placed that as a, as a good marker. It's healthy for a city to develop individual areas for the market to thrive in those areas. So we don't have competition of twelve, we'll just say, Mexican restaurants in one single strip. But we can spread them throughout the city. You can travel between them fairly easily, but people can shop and work and play locally. And I think this is a perfect example of that. I really, really, honestly do. I like that it's a little further away from the two ninety-one, one fifty corridor. It's back a little bit further in there. It's beautiful, in my opinion. And I like the amenities that come with it. I think a lot of thought's put into this. As we move forward as a commission, as a city, as the city council reviews this as well, it's time to start thinking of these areas as more of the expansion into a healthy growth rather than one type of form of growth or another. What is exactly right for that area? And I respect Commissioner Rader and what she said, that she disagrees it's the right spot. I personally will vote for this because I think it is the right spot. I think it's a great portion there. I feel a lot of the concerns about making it friendly for bikes, pedestrians a little bit more, making it easier access. I think as we move forward, we'll get those answers a little bit better. Dealing with MoDOT, who has become a great partner recently, I must say, is the best way of moving forward with that. And the applicant had done that. The applicant had talked to MoDOT and the neighbors. So I'm very happy to support this. I think that this is a good practice, but I hear the concerns of my fellow commissioners as well. And I would forward this and recommend it, in my opinion, to the city council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that no one else on the commission felt like we need to have more information about the apartments as in continuing the hearing? If anybody feels that that might be necessary?
I just want to make a comment. I don't think it's necessary. I personally think we have plenty of information on the apartments. Here's, here's my take on it is we've, we've been looking at apartments for the last year consistently. We've got an update in May. I do think we need to have some, some discussion on it in roundtable today. I don't necessarily think this should hold up to project because according to my memory, about eighty percent of the apartments that have come through have been on the north side of town. I could be wrong, but it seems to me like that. In my opinion, the south side of town, we're, we're lacking this type of development. So I, I personally think we can move forward with this today. But I do think we need to have some roundtable discussion about Reynolds in general and what type of tools we have moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll comment, sir. I agree with Commissioner Benbrook. I mean, I think we have enough information to move this project forward. I don't think it warrants holding up this project. I, I will just reiterate, I do think this is the right place for this project because across the street we have fourplexes and duplexes. I know we're not supposed to reference them like that anymore. I forget what the more appropriate term is. Multifamily townhomes and et cetera. But denser kind of residential. And so it's kind of nice that we'll have this apartment across the street. And, you know, we have residential right around the backside that's more condensed as well. I think, you know, they do need the opportunity to have some commercial space in there. And so to me, in this part of town, it's probably the, the best spot for it. I mean, that initially was what was going to be there. I think initially there was too much commercial up there loaded, which is probably why the project didn't move forward. I don't know. But, you know, the other thing I just want to say is millennials and Gen Z's look at housing differently than boomers and Gen Xers. And so those are the people that are moving into multifamily residences and, and want that kind of stock. And so that's why they are happening all over the city and the country. But anywhere you look around town, it's happening that, and what surprises me is that they're like almost fully leased. And so to me, that says there's not enough. And I, I believe, you know, as we move forward, we need to be mindful of the, the, the people that are moving, that want to move into the community and can't because we don't have that. And then in addition, we have people moving out of homes that want to move into more. You know, I do believe we need more maintenance provided, older persons' homes, like me. So when I want to step down into something. But, you know, I, I don't think, I think we have enough information to move this forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Tuzinski.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I figured I should weigh in as everyone else does too. I do think this is the right location for this project. I like the amenities. I like the way it looks. And I do think that there are boomers that are looking for products like this. You know, I know someone close to me that recently sold their house because they didn't want to have any kind of maintenance and any kind of really responsibility on their home, you know. And so I think there's a lot of opportunities for a lot of different age groups to look into projects like this. And I remember it was before Ms. Nassif joined us here, that when we did talk about it last. If I remember correctly, it was mid nineties of rental occupancy in Lee Summit at the time for apartments. It was a very low percentage of unoccupied apartments that we had. And also, I think, I know Commissioner Benbrook and I were talking about it a little bit earlier. But, but also there was still room in the twenty twenty-six study, I think, that we, twenty twenty-two study, that we had, you know, still some room in how many apartments that we were going to have. Twenty twenty-two study that we had, you know, still some room in how many apartments that we were going to have by, was it 2030, I believe? Yeah, 2032, um that we still had room in that, that that we really weren't at that level. And I know that was going to be relooked at and I'm hoping that's something on the agenda down the road. Um but I do think that there's enough information to move forward and I'm going to be supporting this because I think in this location, in this area. It makes sense and it it adds some more commercial, which I think is great along that corridor and as well as pushes some more density down that corridor too. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tap and the Griffin Riley Group for bringing this in front of us. It looks great. It's beautiful. Um I think it's going to be a nice project. I would just say in my comments, my only concern is. That one little spot of everybody going back and forth there makes me a little nervous, but that's it. But uh Mr. Trachten.
Thank you, sir. Um I did want to also agree with Commissioner Radar about. We do need more mid-level housing. We need stock that people can move into this community. It doesn't cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a house. We need that smaller housing stock. And I think there's some projects that are there being discussed that I would like to, you know, we need more of that. So anyway, I'll proceed with my motion. I moved recommend approval of application PL two zero two three dash zero and nine three rezoning from CP two to RP three to PMX and preliminary development plan. Prior mixed use eighteen oh five and nineteen oh five southwest M one fifty highway, Griffin Riley Property Group applicant.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Chair.
Have a motion and a second. Can I get a vote on the application, please?
Mark Kitchens?
Yes.
Senator Rader?
No.
Dana Arth?
No.
Johnny Funk?
Yes.
Harry Trachten?
Yes.
Tonya John Afford?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
Chip Tzitski?
Yes.
The application has been recommended for approval. Move on to our next item, which will be application PL two zero two three dash one two nine comprehensive plan amendment. Change in land use designation from residential one to mixed use eighteen oh five and nineteen oh five southwest M one fifty highway. Griffin Riley Investment LLC. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony on this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time.
Um can 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 you guys hear me? I'm I'm a neighbor and I I thought there was going to be a moment for the neighbor for. Public speaking on the issue you just talked about.
Had a moment there. Did we miss someone?
Well, I'm a I'm I'm a Napa Valley neighbor. I've talked to a few people on the project in the past and I was at the neighbor meeting. Um I thought we were.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second here. We called for public comment on that.
Yeah, you did. There was a, there was a point after the initial two presentations that you called for any testimony from the public that I heard.
I heard it on the first issue, but I didn't hear it on this one.
I think there was.
Okay. Do we need to reopen?
No, I mean, you've already closed the hearing. Um.
I've been on the phone for a long time and I promise I didn't hear you. I thought you guys started out right away with everybody else talking and I did not hear one thing about public comment, but. I mean, my only concern, if you got, I mean, I I really have been listening very closely. I just don't remember that. I I know there was one issue in Lakewood. I heard that.
Hold on one second, one one second.
So I I'll go ahead. I I mean, I definitely heard you call for public testimony after, I think, staff's presentation. And I'll go ahead and mention this. There will be a second public hearing at the city council. She can testify at that public hearing also.
Did you, did you catch all that information?
And also call staff in between this and the city council hearing.
Can you, can you provide her with that information, Amy?
Ma'am, you said. It might have been, it might have been when somebody's microphone wasn't working. I don't know, but there were a few people I could not hear. But is, are you talking about the meeting on September fifth?
Act, it'll be on October tenth.
Okay. I have a letter that I got from the developers about this meeting in September fifth and you said, what's the October meeting?
So the developer had requested a continuance. We can, we can speak to you after the hearing this evening or we can um. You can call us first thing in the morning. We can give you all the details on the on the upcoming date and the council meeting.
Okay, that's why I have a very big concern. There are people opposed here because of traffic and because of noise. And they're, they've been very good, but there's also the issue of drainage that they did not talk about at all. That we have asked, our whole HOA has asked for them to do a study by an engineer and I didn't hear anything about that. So that's kind of a big deal. We can't just forget about that.
So Chair, my recommendation, Chair, you can, you know, you control the meeting. You control who speaks at this point. Um there will be an opportunity for any resident to speak with staff between now.
Yes.
And the public hearing in front of the city council, and then they're welcome to come to the city council public hearing also.
So can you reach out to staff in the morning? Here at City Hall? Can you do that? Because we've already closed our our hearing on that matter. We've already put the vote in and recommended it to the city council. You will have an opportunity at city council to speak, but you can also speak with staff first thing in the morning.
And we also have a preliminary stormwater plan. We're happy to go over with you and give you information on to and connect you with our engineering team and our planners.
Okay, yeah, they, that was one thing that was a big deal because we do have flooding issues over here with the creek that divides and there I didn't hear one thing about that. And I'm sorry, I tried to cut in there, but I wanted to.
We're gonna, we're gonna cut you off here real quick because we.
Where, where, what's the number of the staff at City Hall that I need to call?
Amy, hang on one, one quick second, one quick second. Here he is pulling up the me, it is September fifth.
They had requested a continuance.
Okay.
Recently to October.
Because it is published as September fifth.
Yes, it just happened. That just happened today. Yes.
Okay, all right. Hopefully I'll get a new letter about that, whoever's sending out correspondence to the people that are budding up to that development, but.
Ma'am, we have to, we can give you a phone number to contact city staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
The phone number you can call is eight one six.
Mm-hmm.
Nine six nine twelve hundred. And then you'll ask for the planner for this project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire away, Shannon. I think we got everybody sworn in. Nope. Is that where we stopped? Okay. Everybody stand and be sworn in at this time.
All right, for this portion, um unless the applicant actually wants to give a presentation, I'll just go ahead and take over. Good evening, Commissioner Shannon McGuire. Uh please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits one through eight.
One through eight noted and entered into the record.
A lot of this information, since we did have a robust public hearing, will seem a little bit repetitive, but I really just want to get it out there and it's good information to have. So. Um again, the applicant is before you, um is proposing to amend the twenty twenty-one Ignite Comprehensive Plan land use map. Um designation for this area from residential one to a mixed use and a residential three use. Um again, as I explained earlier, the existing comp plan is inconsistent um with the actual zoning and actual uses out there. Um the comp plan land moosh, land use map should look similar to this where we have a residential two over the Osage and the commercial and residential three. Over the the subject site and a little bit to the to the east. And the subject property is currently zoned CP two and RP three. Um it is bordered by large residential on the north and the east. Um south of the property is the Napa Valley residential subdivision and does have a mix of villa stand, villa sized lots, standard lots and some larger estate sized lots. West across the street um is the southwest uh prior road or west across southwest prior road is the Osage. Mixed density residential subdivision, again, that has single family duplexes, fourplexes. So in the Ignite Comprehensive Plan, there are multiple um goals and principles established by that. I just keep in mind that the the land use map portion of that is just a small component of the overall five hundred and plus document um comp plan. So um that plan does establish again, multiple goals and principles that should be followed when we're reviewing and. Uh any possible development and when developers are proposing development. One of those established goals is to promote a variety of housing options, styles and price ranges throughout the community. Um creating a community that has these variety of housing options does promote a dynamic and inclusive neighborhood. Um this also does create opportunities for shopping and services nearby, um as well as um. Promotes convenient public facilities such as quality roads, pedestrian connectivity and those type items. Their proposed development does achieve this goal by providing additional housing options as well as the added benefit of the commercial sites. And the added infrastructure with the pedestrian connectivity that they are. And they're, they are doing um quite a bit of uproar, uh upgrading of the existing roads as well as adding that new Osage, the east, east west road. Um that in the future could go ahead and and continue to the east there and connect up to to the road that was just installed by the church. Another goal of the comp plan. Um it's just seeks to um. Promote development that transitions land use patterns and intensity. So as I explained earlier, the the way the project is laid out where we have the higher use. Uh residential, commercial um to the north, um residential, uh multifamily in the middle, um sandwiched by the single family to the south. As well as the mixed density to the east really provide, provides kind of a step down um. Uses uh from the higher intensity along the highway down to the lower intensity of the single family and the larger lots down there. And um this plan does meet the the goal of that step town um as proposed by the comp plan. Um and. Lost my place. Um by situating the commercial mixed uses, um they do do accomplish that and the um. Staff does find that it meets that that goal. But when we had the um questions about pedestrian connectivity, I was internally screaming. I have a slide for that. Um so as you can see here, uh one of the other goals by the comp plan is to provide additional pedestrian connectivity through pedestrians bicycle connections. Um throughout the internal circulation and circulation to the the surrounding neighborhoods. So as you can see here on this slide. Um the red is the public sidewalks that will be installed with this project. Um running along the north side here, along one fifty, as well as the west side all the way down prior. Um there is a crosswalk that does cross one fifty on this side. Um so as you can see here, if if someone um from Napa Valley wants to to visit the site, they can walk um up and. Get into the site on multiple places. And they do have the walking path around the detention pond as well. Um and then in multiple avenues to get to the commercial site from the southern site. So. Um staff does um find that 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 meets the intent of the comp plan as. A number of objectives identified in the comp plan do center around importance of a diverse and multi supportive um neighborhood services achieved through purposeful growth. Um the proposed mixed residential and commercial development um brings together complementary land uses. Um that serve and support one another in a more compact development as opposed to spreading them out. We're going vertical. And it seems to be um appropriate for the the. Commercial node of the intersection of one fifty to do that mixed use and and incite it here. Um the proposed balance does just um that with that vertical mixed use. Um and they do provide a very walkable and environment for the multifamily and the surrounding neighbors as a whole. So. Um the the pedestrian connectivity um. Will increase um not just for the the subject site, but for the for the neighborhoods to the south and to the east and and hopefully. Um in the future with any possible development to to the east. Again, this object site is within the the M one fifty corridor overlay. Um the the overlay identifies the intersection um as an activity center. Um on the under the activity centers in the that overlay, um there to be situation, or the activity centers in the overlay are situated at the intersections um along one fifty. Um the plan does encourage these centers to be multi storied um with a vertical mixed use with residential use above that first floor. Um so with the proposed development, it is meeting that goal. Um and does meet the the CDO requirements um for that. Additionally, the comp plan does identify one fifty as a priority corridor. And as such, the corridor um. The corridor provides a mix. Um the comp plan requires the corridor to provide a mix of medium to high density residential uses with various neighborhood services and retail services. Um the plan does identify um that the primary use for these quarters should be multifamily and commercial with office uses as well. Um the plan further stipulates that these corridors should have a density of between the that sixteen and twenty-four dwelling units per acre. And have a FAR of no, no more than one point oh. Um so the actual proposed plan is a slightly lower than that sixteen. Um but not by much and they're, they are below that one point oh requirement. So staff finds that this um portion of comp plan is is satisfied with the proposed plan. In the, in two thousand and seven, the council did rezone the property um from Ag to the current CP two and RP three. The PDP was approved at that time, um included thirty-four acres, which was um slightly larger um than the existing plan before you. Um in that plan, there was seven, a little over seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial and around four hundred thousand square feet of residential. Again, that that plan did expire two years ago or two years pri- um after the initial approval. However, the rezoning does not expire. So. So when talking about compatibility, we look at the 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 area as a whole. So the proposed mixed use. Um and multifamily development is compatible for that area, um given that we do have the same uses um right in that general vicinity with the Arbor Walk. And we do have the the higher density um residential um to the west there in Osage. So Arbor Walk um is a a mixed use, albeit a a vertical mixed use, but we still have that mix of commercial, uh single family residential and multifamily. Uh the existing character of the development, south is residential in nature, so we're still kind of maintaining that residential um by placing the the residential um component. Um to the south and keeping that mixed use commercial to the north. With that, um. But the conditions as outlined in the staff letter and here, um. Proposed application does meet the the requirements of the UDO and the Design and Construction Manual, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Shannon. Have any public comment on the?
I don't think that went through the microphone. You might.
You have any comment on the comprehensive? Anybody on Zoom?
The citizen left Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh we will go to the commission for any questions.
Zenski?
Um, Mr. Chairman, um Shannon, can you go, I think it's one slide ahead. Okay, so that existing parcel that's just to the east, the parcel that we're talking about, you continually are showing different zoning for those two pieces. Those pieces aren't, sorry, not zoning, different land uses, colors, but that parcel is not included in this specific change, correct? It's just the the parcel, the part in the highlighted area with this.
Correct. The 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 parcel is just going to be the the cross hashed area that we are changing. Uh this will remain. Um in the near future, we will bring a a staff driven comp plan amendment to uh align the. Comp plan map with the current and existing um uses and zoning out there. So um we will change that to to what it needs to be at that time.
But that piece to the east is is still going to be yellow in in our comp plan.
Correct.
And then as you, and I'm just thinking for the future purposes, as you move east on that side, do you anticipate? More of that being commercial and residential three like that? Or do you think that'll just continue to be more, yeah, so all that green there, so.
So this area, I mean, so we'll start with here. Um this. So this area, I mean, we'll start with here. This area is is developed out with the church. So I don't foresee that changing.
That's commercial, right? I'm sorry, that's the zoning is is commercial.
The zoning currently is ag on the church.
Okay.
This is the zoning map now. This is that, this is a single family large lot as well as this. So future, I could foresee a similar development pattern as what's before you today.
I remember seeing one of the slides had, I think, part of the church being a different color. It was not, it was not shown. Yeah.
It's split with between commercial and residential ones. So that's part of that. When we bring it forward for the staff driven update for the area, we'll include that to to turn take it to the institutional that churches typically are.
So is 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 red also institutional?
Red is commercial.
Commercial. So will that red change then to a different?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Benbrook.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just one clarification. You had a zoning map that had activity nodes identified. This intersection as an activity node. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. So this was identified as an activity node back when? What year?
Back when the applicant corridor was 2007, I believe.
Okay, so since 2007, we've kind of anticipated this being an activity center, which is not congruent with residential necessarily. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we kind of anticipated the zoning in this area changing to more of a commercial mixed use.
Correct. And I'll step back to the the previous answer I gave. We did not foresee this to be a single family. We do see it as residential mixed use with the residential above a commercial use.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. That's all I had. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenna Ford. Crafted?
Questions?
Commissioner Arthur?
No questions.
Commissioner Rader?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Kitchens?
No questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Close the public hearing and open up for discussion or a motion which will be given by Mr. Tuzinski. Any discussion on this? Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve application number PL 2023-129.
We approve, we're approving this, not recommending.
Yes, you have final action on the comp plan amendment.
Hi, Amy Chair. Can we interrupt for just one moment? I did find some items that that I apologize, I need to provide you with an updated resolution in your packet before you have a motion for adoption of the resolution this evening.
What's the next one?
So I'll make one comment here procedurally. Typically, there's not a motion associated with the application when you're amending the comprehensive plan. So the item that's on the agenda for what just happened, usually the only action item is action on the resolution. So to pause for a moment, you don't need the motion you're about to make. We only need a motion on the resolution. And part two is what Amy just said is we need to, we need to not have that motion tonight because we need to have a new form of the resolution to present to you. There's some errors in the, there's some errors in the resolution. There's too many to try to amend out tonight.
I need to recommend a continuation?
Yeah, so so back so part one of what I just said, you don't need to make any motion tonight.
Okay.
We will bring a resolution back at the next council meeting and you'll just act on that resolution.
How about you bring it back to the next planning commission meeting? At the next council meeting.
Yeah, sorry. I go to a lot of councils. I get all of those too.
But we will just jump over all that and head right to roundtable. Buddy?
Go for it.
Okay, I wrote some notes. Okay, I just want to say on this. Oh, I guess I want to say. Sorry, you guys. Get it written down. Okay, I guess I just want to make this statement. Again, I'm going to reiterate what I said before. I think that we need to make sure that when we're when we're looking at these projects that we're looking at the city as a whole, not the section, the section, this section, because we are all Lee Summit and that what we're doing is balanced. So you can have a whole bunch of apartments on the north side but not have a bunch of apartments on the on the south side, but if you've got too many apartments already anyway, you know, really, what difference does it make? And then I'm gonna say something about what Terry said about the millennials. So I think I would agree with you presently, that is what's going on, but we're not just in the present. We we're here. I think many of us are probably going to be here for quite a long time and we have to look into our future and make sure that we're looking ahead to see not just that we're satisfying the needs of today, but that we're looking into the needs of tomorrow because remember, those millennials aren't going to stay in apartments for all their lives. The oldest millennial is now forty years old and they are nesting. They're beginning to nest. They're beginning to have families and children. And so I think that we need to just remember because there's been so many of these projects that have come before us and they are nice projects, but it's just like, are they going to satisfy the needs of this city in the future? So let's just make sure that when we're thinking about this, that we're balancing out our desires and and what we're doing here in Lee Summit. All I want to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody?
Thank you, Chair. I agree everything you just said, Commissioner Rader. I would like to explore what tools the planning commission and the staff has when it comes to retail rental properties and especially when it comes to high density multifamily rental properties. Now, I don't know if we have any tools available to us to help direct us, to help I use the right word, control. Maybe that's not the right word. But maybe to help encourage developers to bring forward entry level homes for sale instead of high density multifamily. Is there such a thing in our in our?
I'm debating bringing my computer up with me, but it's about to die. I'm sorry. Amy Nassif, Deputy Director. So thank you so much for all the questions tonight and for the comments and the requests for data and stuff. I was feverishly trying to find some information and get some stuff together for you just just to help. But to your question specifically, one of the biggest tools that we use is our comprehensive plan. And in our Ignite comprehensive plan, it does talk about one of our major goals as being having more housing diversity and housing choice options and increasing all of our types of diverse housing that we offer. And I believe that the our Ignite plan said that one of our goals was specifically more of like a sixty five percent single family and low density housing stock and last last checked on that, which was that around that end of May, I think, was that we were well above that. We had, we were at seventy four percent. So the fact that we're seeing so much multifamily or smaller lot, two family villas, things coming in, that helps to lower that that number and then raise the higher density multifamily number that the comprehensive plan said that we should be looking for and targeting city citywide. So hope that, hope that helps.
Absolutely. For a follow up question, and maybe this is also for legal. To deny a project because you've, a commissioner feels that it doesn't fit into the Ignite comprehensive plan, is that something that we can do legally?
I will defer if I could, but also, yes, yes.
It's not denial, but it's our recommendation.
The comprehensive plan is is one of our tools. It's our guide. There are a whole host of about twelve, thirteen zoning criteria you should be looking at.
And you guys provided that. Then that was fantastic.
Sure. And but the data that we do share and collect is very important and it's really great to have that knowledge, but to look at just that data of like a raw number and be like, well, hey, this is what how I'm going to act on like something to your point. That is, that is not, you know, recommended at all. And then I will turn the rest of that over to David.
So to answer your specific question, consistency between the zoning and the comprehensive plan is definitely one factor. It's a very important factor. The U D O lists eighteen factors to consider when you're reviewing rezoning and PDP decisions. That's one of eighteen, but that's if you were to go through all of those and sort of in my mind, from a legal standpoint, legal defensibility, rank the significance of all of those eighteen factors, consistency with the comprehensive plan is very high on that list. Never done what I just said, but it's it'd be at least in the top half and maybe the top third as far as importance, important factors. So I think that's the answer to your question.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm very concerned with how much high density is moving in the north side of town. I've confirmed for the schools, the traffic, I mean, just a lot of stuff. So tonight, what we had come before us, I I supported it mostly because of its location. I thought it was neat where it went. But I know we have others coming forward. Matter of fact, you know, we have a a plan that was reviewed not too long ago where there's a massive amount of high density that's going to come before us in the future on that north side of town and that that development concerns me a lot. So this is very helpful. Thank you.
Since I couldn't remember. I think that the other thing that I wanted to just state was I talked about balance and what I meant by that by that was that it's just, it's not just all housing either. You know, a city has to have a commercial component and there has to be, and I'm not talking about just retail restaurants and things like that. We need, we need things like, like I said, you know, office buildings, high rise office buildings, medical buildings, CPA firms. I I kind of envisioned 150 as being that commercial corridor like 135th and Overland Park where there's, you know, there's the shields and there's, there are restaurants there, but there's a Dave and Buster's, so there's an entertainment area there and I mean, I think it's just a perfect place for that. Not that it matters what I think, but but it seems to me like if we really want to grow as a city that's balanced where we're bringing in, we really are bringing in jobs other than just restaurant jobs or things like that, we need to bring in businesses. And I kind of thought, you know, this is a really good thing for EDC to to jump into and, you know, help us find in our commercial real estate brokers in in the city, because we've got some good ones, to really help us bring as I was thinking about this particular zoning where you have the commercial on the front and the and the RP three on the back or two. I mean, to me, that would be a perfect place for for a big box store or something like that. And you still can satisfy the needs of housing, but yet have something that would actually bring good paying jobs in. So that was what I wanted to say. Thank you.
No, because it was the same thing Sinda said about the commercial, bring it trying. I I'd like to see more people stay here and and work. And I think that's a big component. That that is one of our visions too. So I think I'm just passionate about keeping keeping revenues in here and employees.
Thank you.
Mr. Tuzinski. Mr. Chairman, I mean, I agree with what Commissioner Rader says and Commissioner Benbrook. But it sounds like to me and from what Ms. Ms. Nasser just told us that we're not even at the density that our comprehensive plan has. But what the problem is, it sounds like to some of the commissioners on here, is that you're not in agreement with the comprehensive plan's density mix. And I don't know what we can do about that at some point because at some point in the past, a whole group of people got together, city staff, elected officials and others came in and came up with that density mix. So obviously, that's, I think that's where some of your concerns may come from, and I don't know how to change that other than revising the comprehensive plan. So I appreciate.
That's not about the density. That's about that particular piece of land. Because I've voted, I've only voted against one one apartment project in all the years I've been on commission. It's it's not that I'm against it. But I'm I'm I think we need updated numbers. I think we need to see where we are. Maybe we need to reevaluate it because we've had a lot of changes in our economy. We've had just a lot go on in the past few years, COVID, everything. So I, but I'm not necessarily against that, but I would like to see density with the option to like townhomes so people can purchase them. I I am and I don't know if you're concerned about this, but I'm concerned about when developers come here, they build a beautiful project and then they sell it. And I can show you a picture of the trash at one of the complexes I lived at and it was horrible. The management of these projects of these properties is key to how well our city looks. And that is scary because some of these managers or new owners don't have really a lot of, they're not stakeholders. They're just making money off of our properties. So I think that's that's where I'm concerned, honestly.
Respect. I I think you misunderstood what I was saying. It's it's not city staff that's bringing these projects. It's the comprehensive plan.
I think it's the comprehensive plan and and to kind of make sure in a little bit of layman's terms, I'm starting to understand where Commissioner Arthur's coming from. It's not the density of the apartments. I think our traffic engineer that was up in front of us chatting away tonight said it very well. All the traffic's going west. They're leaving Lee Summit. All the traffic is coming east. They're coming back to Lee Summit. Why are they going west? They're going west to work. We had a nice piece of commercial property there. I agree with what you're seeing. I don't think anybody is in disagreement about the density and the multifamily piece of it is, could there have been more focus put on commercial?
And I don't disagree. I've I've been a proponent for commercial, more commercial and especially.
And I think the comprehensive plan lays that out.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be great along that corridor, but what we have to look at is what's being brought in front of us. And quite honestly, the proposal that was brought in front of us today was tremendously better than the proposal prior. You know, the proposal prior was a heat sink. I mean, there was so many parking lots and all asphalt or whatever compared to what we have now. And if this actually meets that zone of that area that you were talking about prior in 150, you know, I think that's a good opportunity for that because that's what was planned to be there. Moving further down, I think let's try to get that commercial in. But in this area specifically, it's what they had it planned for. So do you really throw everything out or do you kind of look at at the positives of what the plan said and we actually approved for or recommended tonight for approval, a nice development that actually fits our change, right? So that's just my thoughts and I'm I'm not disagreeing with you at all about what you said. So.
I'm not either, and I think it's healthy to have good conversations about this and I just, you know, I I've told everybody that I know, I think we have an absolutely excellent commission. I really do because everybody here brings something unique, special, another perspective. I I just think it's really, really important for us to have these conversations. I I think they're great because sometimes I change my mind. Right? I'm not, you know.
No, you don't.
Stan, I I'm not.
I agree with what everything has been said tonight. I appreciate the dialogue and the discussion around these issues. They're important for our community to move it forward. I mean, I agree, we need more business in this community. We need more commercial business to keep people here so they are, and and I think it's a priority for the city. But, you know, what's the strategy that we're deploying to make that happen? And, you know, part of that equation is the EDC and, you know, their job is to bring help bring business to this community. And so we have to be partnering with them and that and those business leaders, which, you know, I know they're working on a plan as well. So just being mindful of that, but we we definitely need more levels of housing in this community. It's.
You know, and Terry, to Chip, you were at that EDC workshop. That that thing was awesome. And what was the, what was the one thing that rang through everywhere? Live, work, play. I mean, and the reality of that is we've got to get businesses into Lee Summit where we can stay here. That's the true meaning of it.
People are leaving to play too. They go to Overland Park.
They are. They're leaving to play.
We lost a
We lost a um, an anchor store, and I think the question is, you guys both brought up a point, the question is, what can we do to incentivize these people to come here or to encourage them, however you wanna say it? The the developers, what can we do to attract that, what we want?
If I could jump, if I could jump in there, the word to attraction, I'm sorry, sorry, Dana. The, in order to attract people, we've gotta have developments like this one. Uh, coming at it from a retail side, I know that's, I mean, that's been booed a couple of times tonight, which I I strongly disagree with. But uh, coming from somebody who's in the retail area, you gotta have the population density in some places to bring them. You know, it, otherwise, we're just gonna force themselves right on corridors instead of into the neighborhoods and things like that. Yeah, and once that's developed out, then the employers start looking at commercial property there. A lot of them build the suite, let's be honest, we had one spec property last uh meeting, and it was a good one, I agreed with, with that, even though I was absent. Um, but the bottom line is, if we don't make the community nice first, it doesn't work the other way around. You know, it may have worked that way back in the day, but it doesn't anymore. The millennials, Gen Zers, like Terry said, and I get looking for the future, too, on that send up. Uh, and I agree with you, they're not gonna be apartment renters forever. Um, but the bottom line is, we make the communities nice, we make them survivable on their own, and then the things flow to it. Then it becomes the area where we see a lot more uh businesses putting in and things of that nature. Um, we're on the edge of growing really big and leave summit really quick, and we gotta do it right. I think the comprehensive plan uh really was researched thoroughly, especially with the update we did, and that there was a lot put into that. I'm with Terry, uh, and I'm with Chip, that we, we need to keep that a little bit more to our gut and not, and not uh try to re-guess the whole machine. But uh, quite frankly, I get everybody's concerns, I mean, there are some major ones there. But we make the community nice by approving projects like the one we saw tonight. That was really, really a good eh thing to bring to that area, and I bet you, I bet you, we see commercial follow-up, thank you.
Chairman, the other thing I wanna say is, is, you know, our opportunity for more commercial, you know, office building type is gonna be the Colburn Road between four-seventy and Colburn Road, that whole section, it's just east, west of Douglas. Um, that's gonna be our opportunity to see a a bunch of office-type buildings and and other things going in there. I mean, it's right there off of four-seventy, I think so, yeah. I'm talking, well, I'm talking about Discovery Park, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and I don't think we've seen that yet, and I think that's got some great plans, and I think that's gonna be a great opportunity, a large area for for a lot of the things that we're looking for in in this, in the city, so.
And if I may jump in, we can always change zoning to commercial if we need more commercial. So as long as we can attract them and they can find land, we can, we can, we can get, get what we need that way.
We are adjourned.